Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerks here, trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Attorney Zemanak.
Here.
Village manager May.
Here.
Finance director Parker.
Here.
We've got a quorum and we'll move on the agenda on, it's part of open forum even though we had it enclosed, but I'm going to ask Greg Pill, Race to the Flag, which is coming up, he gives some information about it.
Yeah, all right.
I like that T-shirt.
Thank you. Well, you two could have one.[43.41][43.41](laughter) And I'm going to tell you just how to do that. But good evening, mayor and village trustees. Congratulations to our three new trustees. Nice to see you all back together again. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Westmont Park District and the People's Resource Center. We will be hosting the 10th annual, it's hard to believe, but it's been 10 years now, of Race to the Flags. And that will occur on Memorial Sunday, which this year is May 26th. The race begins and ends at Ty Warner Park, goes through the Oakwood community, and it's a part of the larger red, white, and barbecue weekend. And it's very easy to go ahead and sign up. RaceToTheFlag, all spelled out, dot org is the website. And just a couple of things. In our 10th year, this will be the shirt color this year. And we also have some really incredible new medals this year, as well as even the, we had the bibs custom designed for our 10th year. We've got wristbands this year for everybody in the race. So a lot of good stuff. And there's not many races around, and for obvious reasons, that end with a pancake breakfast. So, you know, that's sort of our little signature difference here. So you can have the family out cheering you. You can run it, you can walk it, you can push a stroller. Last year, we had 500 or so people out for the race. We had Judy Sue from ABC 7 was our honorary starter. And I'm excited to say that this year we'll be back on ABC 7 on Thursday, the 23rd of May. We'll be on between the 11 and 12 o'clock hour with a live interview. And we'll have myself and a bunch of kids, as well as the PRC director down there, and we'll be talking about the race. So, you know, we joke a little bit, and it's a light thing, and it's a fun thing. But the bottom line is there's a lot of people in DuPage County who are in need, both from a food standpoint, from job training, as well as clothing. And the People's Resource Center, with offices in Westmont and in Wheaton, is here to help support those people. And all proceeds from this race go directly to the People's Resource Center. And this year, we had a record year for sponsorship. Our runners are down a little bit, so I see 10 potential ones right here that we could up those numbers right away. Again, you don't have to run it, you can come out and walk it. It's a beautiful morning. We're guaranteeing about 72 degrees at race time, dry weather, beautiful shirt, pancakes at the end. There's not much more you can do with that. So ABC 7, two weeks from today, between 11 and 12, tune in. And I'd also just like to make one further request. On our RaceToTheFlag.org website, we do have a button for volunteers. And we've always been volunteer-centric. That's what put Westmont on the map. And this year, we're running a little short on volunteers. We usually need between 40 and 50 volunteers, and we're about half that right now. It's true, most of them come in at the end when they start to see what their Memorial Weekend looks like. But if you're interested in spending a few hours out there, our site is very well laid out. You can actually go on it and see all the different job opportunities for volunteering that are available. It's a four- or five-hour morning, and there are pancakes for the volunteers also, as well as a beautiful shirt. So I hope you'll come out and support us at Race to the Flag. It's our 10th anniversary, and we're looking to be bigger and better this year. Any questions?
I have two questions.
Sure.
Do you have dog walkers?
Oh, we don't allow dogs.
And then, do you know who's flipping pancakes?
We believe that this year, we will have a celebrity flipper, and it will be none other than the mayor of Westmont.
Oh, so it's a rumor?
I've been flipping them since day one.
The rumor, we're just going to sweep him up in enthusiasm and make sure he's out there.
Doing it all.
The reason we don't have the dogs, that gets asked, is we are a CARA-certified race, which is the Chicago Area Runners Association. We're also United States Track and Field Certified. And under CARA, they don't allow animals, and they also don't allow skateboards and rollerblades. There have been too many incidents with tripping and things like that. They do allow strollers. We put those in the back third in the grouping of the starting corral. And then, once they get rolling, everybody's on their own from there. And just to reiterate, 5K is 3.1 miles. And it's a flat level. We've got water in the midway, and the fire chief has promised us a misting area, just in case we have any heat for people. Mayor, question?
No, it's just that the Lions Club supports it and does the pancake breakfast.
Lions Club does the pancake breakfast, as well as puts on the red, white, and barbecue that weekend. It's a great weekend. Lot of inter-agency coordination and working together. Park District, Lions, the Village of Westmont, police, fire, PRC, we've got everybody on board.
Rotary.
Rotary. The list goes on and on.
Well, thank you.
Hope to see you out there. Thanks so much.
If you've got a minute, stay there. And I'd ask Larry McIntyre and some of his Westmont Special Events Board to come to the podium. And they have a quick presentation to make.
Thank you, mayor. As evidenced, actually, by Greg's presentation, he puts in a lot of work in the community. And he's taken over this particular event, the Race to the Flag 5K. And every single year, it gets bigger and better, and he does amazing things for community events. And also, he is the driving force behind the Westmont Restaurant Week, which I think, this is only the third year, and it's been absolutely amazing, continues to grow. And so Greg is deserving of great appreciation always. And Westmont Special Events would like to present you with the Jim Wright's Making Memories Award.
Oh, my gosh. I'd just like to say thank you very much. It's a privilege to be able to work on many of these committees. And I do it because I love doing it. And that's the basic reason. And I hope I've been doing it for many, many years. Thanks so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Don't get surprised often. You surprise me.
All right, thank you. Before, I don't know, John, you got an open forum request? If you got an open forum, did you fill it out?
No.
Okay, then. Enjoy. All right. You're not here. I just want to give you an opportunity, if you had something you wanted to talk to the board about. If not, we'll move on to my report. And I'd like to start off, first of all, we just gave the Jimmy Wright Remembering Award. Jim passed away this week. And Jim's been a lifelong resident of the community, 32 years village employee. His services is tomorrow at Toon, I believe, 3 till 8:00. And if there's one individual who gave everything to this community, it was Jim. And I'd like to turn it over to manager May to give a couple more words.
Sure, thank you. And the, you know, there's a lot, it's a little hard, you know, not only, you know, the circumstances of the event, but I can't say anything that everybody in this room and everybody watching in this entire community doesn't know. We did, Jim's been not well for some time, you know, to different degrees. He's been not, he's an employee of the Public Works Department, but he hasn't been with us. He's been on leave for several months, struggling with many different issues that, you know, culminated this week with his passing. He's, you know, he's, you know, longtime employee, you know, a friend to everyone, you know. I miss him. The department misses him, the village misses him, this entire community misses him. You don't meet many people that are, that, you know, have that many friends and, you know, essentially have no enemies. Now, there's a lot of, you know, good conversations he's had with a lot of people, but the reach and the, you know, his ability was, was everything, was everything Westmont. Westmont First, you know, start there. He's an original member of the inaugural, you know, Westmont First Committee. It's just that whole mindset and, you know, attitude. He cared about everything Westmont, whether it was, you know, shopping local or advocating, you know, new businesses that weren't open yet. He had a very strong online presence. And when the, you know, when the topic was, you know, Westmont, it was 100% positive and all the time. And this isn't just, you know, I mentioned he's an employee. There's, you know, he had that personal attitude at work, and he has it, you know, himself. And that was, you don't find many people, you know, like that. When you're in a public service, you know, whether employed or, you know, elected or volunteer, whatever it is, you know, the, you know, a good measure of that is, you know, if your, you know, your community and your efforts, if you, you know, if you've left the place in a better state than when it was, you know, when you started. And that's truly the case for Jimmy. And as I said, you know, not only at work, whether it was how to, you know, make something better, do it more efficiently, you know, the new businesses, special events are very involved, but he was also a volunteer in all the special events, whether they were new ones being created, or each year, how to make the, you know, the existing ones even better. And it's just little things, but it's always, you know, making it, you know, a better experience for, you know, the community too. So he's a true public service, you know, work and play, you know, as a job, as a person. And I, you know, there's a lot of strong testimony online, too, you know, very easy to find. And the, you know, the outreach in this, you know, absence is clear. So this, you know, this community lost its best friend this week.
Thank you. And I'm going to look to clerk Simski, because we lost another friend, other lifelong, almost lifelong resident who we honored a couple months ago for her 100th birthday.
Right. Um, yeah, we lost Dan Simski Tuesday. And even though she was 100, and she really went downhill fast after her birthday, she has so much pride. And she wouldn't have a wake. She said, "You don't have a wake. I don't want anybody seeing me in a gasket." So she's been very stubborn about what was to be done. So it's going to be a very small memorial. She was a wonderful mother-in-law to me. I can't say enough kind words about her. And the joy she got from what Ron gave her, the mayor gave her that night with her proclamation and her key to the city, she was thrilled. She showed it to everybody with such pride. So I thank all of you for always being good to her. So, thank you.
That's just another sad note.
And of course, Jimmy is just extra special.
And I'll wrap up. My last item is from the Community Awards Dinner recap. Congratulations to the Chamber for another great event. Highlights include Stella Qualiza as Citizen of the Year, Uncle Bubbs for Business of the Year, and Maggie Bier as our Westmont Public Servant of the Year. Again, congratulations to all three of those and everyone else who received an award that evening. I'll move on to clerk Simski.
I want to add a couple of information things. The letter carriers coordinate their stamped-out hunger food drive Saturday, May 11th. You can put your food donations in a, next to your mailbox, so that, in a bag, or a box, or whatever you have, preferably a bag, because they have to carry them, next to your mailbox before they come. And the luge is back. And on June 22nd and 23rd, the U.S. Olympic luge team will return to Westmont for the sixth time to conduct their Midwest search for future luge Olympians. So, and it's fun to watch that. Everybody should go out and see the kids on their luge. So, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We'll go to trustee Addington.
Thank you, mayor. Again, my condolences also to the Simski family. Yes, I've known Anne close to 50 years, you know, wonderful lady. And Jimmy Wright and his family. And he was very good. Every time the Lions Club needed something at one of our events, he'd come up with a sign for us. He was good at it. Monday night, I went down to Mount Vernon. Our former 19-year member of village manager Ray Botch, who got himself elected, who's now a politician, was sworn in in Mount Vernon. And Ray is looked at down there kind of the way we've ended up being looked at because of all the work we've done with repairing a lot of the infrastructure in that town that had been left alone for a lot of years. And so congratulations to Ray, even from an administrator to a politician. Happy Mother's Day, of course, is coming up on Sunday, so let's say that. And let's talk about red, white, and barbecue, which is only two weeks away. And it starts on Friday, the 24th, through Sunday, the 26th. Right now, I have 49 competitive teams cooking professionally, both Saturday and Sunday. They cook chicken, ribs, pork shoulder or pork butt, and brisket. And they will be competing between those two contests for a $18,000 worth of cash prizes. And then on top of that, we have another 20-some people who will be cooking on Friday night in a steak competition. And then on Saturday afternoon, we have backyarder amateurs who cook chicken and ribs. And right now, we have 37 in that contest. So altogether, we have about 150 teams competing in the different events. It's, we're down a little bit this year because we're a little compressed for space because of the construction of the naditorium. But you can go to www.westmontbbq, look at the display of, we have some great entertainment. There's some great bands playing Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. There is some great food. We have teams that are cooking competitively, but we also have some great vendors out there cooking barbecue. And so you get the opportunity. And this is our 13th year, sponsored by the Westmont Lions Club. It's a major fundraiser for us. And I know Greg promised, he left, didn't he? 72 degrees. Last year, it was like 95. So maybe I would take Greg's word for sunny. Sunny and 72, I think we'd be a lot of effort.
As long as it's not snow.
No snow, yeah. We've had everything else over the years. But there's a carnival, and the food, and the entertainment, and then watching these competitors cook. And so fun time for all. And so come out and have fun. There's free parking. There's no charge for the entertainment. So, you know, you can have a good time. And that's it, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, mayor. A couple things. Our next Public Safety Committee meeting will be May 23rd, 4:30 here in the Village Hall. Everyone is invited to attend that meeting. Starting with our Police Department, the Drug Takeback was a week ago, I believe. And the recap was 201 pounds of prescription drugs collected. So I'd like to thank them for helping facilitate that. That's a great way to get the drugs off the street. Cop on Top, Friday, May 17th, benefiting Special Olympics at both Dunkin' Donut locations, 19 West 63rd Street and 121 West Ogden Avenue. Will be participating for 5:00 AM to 11:00 AM. So let's go on out there and see our favorite cops on top. Special Olympics Paper Shredding Fundraiser is Saturday, May 18th, from 9:00 AM to noon at the Westmont Police Department, 500 North Cass. Moving on to the Fire Department, I would like to congratulate interim deputy chief Fitzgerald and invite Chief Riley up for a few moments. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo.
So as you know, in 2017, when I was a deputy chief, we got reaccredited for the fourth time. And in 2018, I passed that torch on to interim deputy chief Jim Fitzgerald. If you want to come up, Jim. So what Jim does for this, and the only one that held this certificate in the department was chief Dave Weiss, who's retired. So Jim took it upon himself to fill out a 78-page application to become certified for the highest ranking certificate through the Center of Public Safety Excellence, along through, with the Jim holds and I both hold, the Chief Fire Officer Program through the Ellen Office as a State Fire Marshal. So I'd like to present this certificate to Jim and read it. The Commission of the Professional Credentia has conferred upon James Fitzgerald, designated March 11th, 2019, the designation of chief fire officer for demonstrating a high level of competence, as witnessed by your peers, by documenting professional, educational, technical, and community service achievements, and fulfilling prescribed standards of performance, ethics, and conducted requirement by CFO. What Jim does after he gets accepted, he has to do a panel interview with chief fire officers throughout the country. That chief officer is then taken back to the Center of Public Safety Excellence Committee and the Commission to get approved for this award. So this is a very high designated award. So congratulations.
Congratulations.
Trustee Guzzo and the mayor, if you could come out for a picture.
And then I, too, would like to take this opportunity to express my condolences to the Simski and the Wright families, from the bottom of my heart. And last but not least, Happy Mother's Day to all you mothers out there. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Harold Berry III.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you stated earlier, we have an Economic Development Committee meeting tomorrow morning here, and we are going to be discussing a new fuel station at Mariano's. This has been their practice at a lot of stores they've constructed from scratch. We've seen the example around, and we're going to have a presentation, again, tomorrow morning here at 9:00 AM. The groundbreaking at the Market Center is being rescheduled from this Saturday. Obviously, we know what's been going on with the weather, so we're going to try to move that to June and try to find a nice warm day. And then this Saturday, May 11th, we have the Tico Annual Family Fun Fest. This is from 11:30 AM to 3:00 PM. This is a family-friendly event. Lots of great market-style food is held at Tico. And if anyone's never been there, it's a great event, and really can open your eyes to their culture. Also, Mr. Mayor, I have one other thing. The Rotary Club is hosting a fundraiser with Woodgrain Pizzeria. So if anyone eats at Woodgrain Pizzeria on May 28th and mentions the Westmont Rotary Club, proceeds from their meal will go to our club. So if anyone can remember that, May 28th, if you're at the Woodgrain, mention the Westmont Rotary Club. I also would, you know, like to send my condolences to the Wright family, to the Simskes, and also to the Hobenizer family, who also had a loss this week. I know a lot of us are familiar with Rod and his wife, that have been big staples here, much like the Simskes and the Wrights. And longstanding, long families here. And I know we always feel like we're all one family here in Westmont. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Nero.
Thank you, mayor. Just a few things. You know, first off, of course, goes without saying, deepest condolences to the Simski family and the Wright family. You know, it was a rough week in Westmont. We lost a, you know, a few, three real good community folks. You know, that, it's sad, right? But, so, Jimmy, I'm very sorry to hear that. I just found out when you mentioned it. So. And then next, moving on, our next Public Works Committee is June 20th. And I believe we have one thing to show about public works beautification that's happening right now in Irving, for everybody to check out. And I don't believe we have anything to comment on it, other than check it out. It looks nice. Nice to see these projects. And I know we're doing this in all different spots of the towns, but just wanted to share that little quick update for you. And that is all I have, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, mayor. The Administration and Finance Committee meeting met at 4:30 today, and we had a discussion allowing businesses to pay our places for eating taxes online. So that may be a possibility in the near future. We also heard information on the Community Arts Program, which is being spearheaded right now by Westmont First, but are looking for additional people to serve on that committee. We also heard from DuPage County regarding asking for an approval for the hotel motel tax request. So if anybody's interested in more information, you can certainly check that out at website and look at the minutes from our meeting. And last thing on the agenda for myself is the Pet Promenade and Party in the Park, being held May the 19th. It's hosted by the Westmont Chamber, celebrates, educates, and encourages compassion and awareness between area families and their pets. So please come out between 11 and 2 at Ty Warner Park. That's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Barker.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to comment, you know, condolences to the families. But Jimmy Wright, one of a kind, one of a kind guy. That's the only way you can describe it, though, when you said Westmont's best friend. I believe it.
Whether they all realize it or not, it's true.
Westmont First will meet May 20th at 6:00 PM at the Public Library. And Larry, would you like to talk just for a second about this art initiative on our behalf? You put it so nicely at the committee, or the committee meeting.
Thank you, trustee Barker. As we had mentioned in our Admin Finance Committee meeting, where trustee Barker has led the initiative of creating an arts initiative, in which overall, the goal is just to support local artists. And we're trying to figure out different ways to do that. Part of that program proposal that we're talking about is a beautification of the train station. And so we're going to be looking at possibly doing some murals over there, as well as some mosaics as part of the program. Another portion is supporting local artists and getting them involved with already established community events. And so our, last year, we had three different nights of our cruising nights, in which we invited local artists out. This year, we're planning to do that every single week. So that'll be 12 weeks, in which local artists are invited to come out and present what they're working on. And hopefully, the community will get out and support that. And then the final part of that is, we're hoping that a year from now, come January 1st, we'll have our first juried art show, in which we do submissions throughout the Chicago land area, bring a lot of attention to Westmont and the arts community, and then put that on display hopefully by April 1st.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other committee is the EIC Committee, and we just had a meeting. We're still reminding people that it's not too late to sign up for the DuPage River Sweep, which is on the 18th, so next Saturday from 9:00 to noon. You have to do that at the county website. And then June 1st, Storm Drain Stenciling. And again, that's volunteer opportunities to give back to the community. And, you know, you would see Jimmy around both of those. So we need somebody to pick that slack up. And then the EIC Committee is also working on a community survey to gauge interest from the residents, you know, to get some resident feedback on what they would like to experience through the EIC. So that is all.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on the agenda. Any trustees see any item they want to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd ask manager May to please read.
Thank you, mayor. Consent agenda this evening, first item is Village Board Minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held April 25, 2019. That's followed by Finance Ordinance Number One, an amount of $1,297,017.82. We have no individual purchase orders this week, so the consent agenda concludes with three proclamations. First is Board to Consider a Proclamation to Declare May 11 through 18 of 2019 is National Police Week, and May 15, 2019, as Peace Officer Memorial Day in the Village of Westmont. The second one is Board to Consider a Proclamation Declaring May 19 through 25 of 2019 is National Public Works Week in the Village of Westmont. And thirdly, Board to Consider a Proclamation to Declare May 19 through 25, 2019, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the Village of Westmont. That completes the consent.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Little.
Motion made and second to approve. On the question, anybody seeing none, I'd ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes. Motion passes. Move on to unfinished business. Amendment to Allow Chairlifts in Limited Circumstances. Board to Consider Ordinance to amend the Municipal Code and Section Board to consider ordinance to amend the municipal code in section 1009.4 of the International Building Code, the IBC, and International Fire Code, the IFC, to allow chairlifts on shared stairwells in multifamily common areas. And I'm going to ask Director.
Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Trustees, this item is in front of you tonight because of a situation at 1237 Williams Court. Mrs. Janet Augustine, who was with us here tonight, submitted an application to install a chairlift that would be bolted to the side of the wall next to the stairs in her condominium unit to allow her husband, who's very ill, to be able to go up and down to his second floor or to their second-floor condominium unit. These chairlifts are allowed in single-family homes, but the building and the fire codes prohibit them in multifamily buildings where stairwells that are shared by multiple residential units have to maintain a minimum width to ensure safety for egress in an emergency. So the village denied the permit. Mrs. Augustine appealed that decision and asked if the village could look at the rules and perhaps find a way that in her particular situation, the chairlift that she's seeking, again, for her husband, could be allowed. The Fire Prevention Bureau Director, Larry Kaufman, came up with a possible solution. It's not a solution that he's recommending, but he's saying that it is a way where in a very particular situation, a chairlift such as the one that Mrs. Augustine is requesting might be allowed. Now, he does have concerns that if the rules are changed, as he drafted and then the village attorney further refined into ordinance form, that if that change is approved by you tonight, it does present some concerns for egress in the case of an emergency such as a fire. So it's a challenging situation. I think we all believe that Mrs. Augustine's request is reasonable and very understandable, and what she's trying to accomplish makes all the sense in the world. But at the same time, as the village, you need to balance the fact that there are other residents in the building, and the safety of them and emergency responders also needs to be taken into account. So I'll leave my.
Do they have support from the association and the residents?
Yes, it's a good question. The property owner in this situation and the permit applicant is the condominium or the homeowners' association, and they have signed off on the permit application, and they are in support of what Mrs. Augustine is requesting. Furthermore, I believe that the residents in her portion of the condominium building are also in support of her request. It's a portion of a larger building, but there's a doorway that just serves four units, two up, one of which is Mrs. Augustine and her husband's, and two down. So it's those four units that have a shared doorway, and it's the two upper units that would be probably most affected by what's being requested.
Do I have a motion to amend our ordinances?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second.
I was going, I was going to ask Attorney, the one, I think we asked this before, if that situation changes, can we add to this motion? Did it be removed?
No, I don't think it should be part of this motion, but keep in mind, you always have the right to rescind this. So if circumstances change for this particular individual.
So just leave it as an approval. Thank you very much.
Just no comments? Anybody in the audience? And I know we had a very nice speech from Mrs. Augustine last meeting we had, and we're happy we at least can accommodate your husband, who is a veteran, and now I got to get to vote. Yeah.
Sorry. I just would like to say, as, you know, while we recognize Larry Kaufman and the good work that he does, I'm assuming that in some fire situations or emergency situations, they come across obstacles and would deal with it accordingly, even though we don't want to make their job harder or any less safe. In this particular case, I would be supportive, so.
Any other comments?
Just to point out, this does apply village-wide to similarly situated property. So if someone else wants to install a chairlift and meets the requirements of this ordinance and gets the consent of the property owner and tenants' owners, they can install similar.
That raises another question.
At a staff level?
Yeah.
Staff level? I would ask John this. Would that or could that be limited by the volume of people? I mean, I'm supportive of this because there's, it's affecting a couple of families, not 25.
It, that's a good question. I don't think it's limited other than it needs the consent of all of the potentially impacted residents or tenants. They'd have to sign up on it.
Are you comfortable with that?
I'd rather not chime in on my comfort level.
But the truth is, most of the places that have that 25 unit or anything are elevator buildings. So we're not going to run with that same obstacle. As a matter of fact, this is somewhat of a rarity where condos only has four units today. You know, most of them are elevated in the town, so, forget who we discussed that about, I mean, Trustee Addington and I, and that was one of the factors where we thought we're not going to see a lot of this because of the elevators. The, you know, if there was a medical need, they could use the elevator in those buildings.
Again, we looked at several different course of action, and this one was the best.
Right.
So again, we can rescind it. Well, let's vote and find out if we pass it first.
Well, yeah.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right.
How long will it take you to get it in? It's going to help your husband immensely.
Unfinished business, 4 West Burlington, the vape shop. Board to consider ordinance approving a B1 Business District development permit for a proposed vape shop at 4 West Burlington Avenue. Director Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, the village received a business license application several weeks ago proposing a vape business in the B1 District, and we did our standard review of it for zoning and other matters, and we determined that it requires a B1 Business District permit, which is in front of you tonight, and that permit requires Village Board approval.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Barry. Second, Addington.
Motion made and second to approve. On the question.
Looking at the downtown redevelopment that we were hoping to move forward with, I feel, this is personal, that a vape shop would be more suited to a strip center. That's my personal feeling on this whole thing. Looking at what we're trying to do in our downtown area to get new development in there, I am not in favor of this.
Yeah, I'll chime in as well. I think, I agree with you, Trustee Guzzo. You know, I don't think this is the type of business we had in mind when we created this TIF district many years ago. You know, we're trying to bring in larger developments using our TIF incentives, and I think that at least was my personal goal when we did that. So I am against this as well.
I'll have to speak up as well. I've taken a look at our plan for the village, and I don't think it meets the criteria. I have a fear that signage and clarity on exactly what's going to happen inside the building is why I'm against it, so.
Anybody from the audience? No other comments? I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Barry.
No.
Trustee Addington.
No.
Trustee Little.
No.
Trustee Guzzo.
No.
Trustee Nero.
No.
Trustee Barker.
No.
Motion fails. Move on to new business. Fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. Board to consider a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget, which starts May 1st. And I, Manager May or Director Parker?
Just briefly for me, the, you know, the annual budget or fiscal year is May 1st. From a staff perspective, you know, we work on it the nine months preceding, you know, May 1st, and the other three months, we're spending the money. But the process we put together, a lot of staff participation, this all was put together iron. We had a special meeting, a budget workshop, that was all presented to you, and went through all the items, details, made some small adjustments based on the workshop, and that budget is here tonight for your approval. I don't know if Mr. Parker's, I don't know if you want to highlight any of the terms in it. I mean, it was two and a, two and a half hours, two hours, 45 minutes was the workshop where you had the complete review, but otherwise, tonight.
And so the only thing that I would say is, the only change from what was initially published as the draft budget is the change that was made at the workshop of adding an additional $10,000 for sidewalk cutting, bringing the grand total of expenses proved in this budget to $75,856,599.
Spend one more dollar.
Yeah. Put it in better roundabout.
And it's available online. So do I have a motion to, for the resolution to adopt?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Little.
Motion made and second. On the question.
Mr. Mayor, I was unable to attend the budget. That was a lot more fun anyways. But anyway, so I'm going to vote present this evening, but I have full faith in my five colleagues, and I definitely have full faith in Spencer. So just wanted to explain my vote this evening.
Six.
Whatever there is. So that was my, I'll vote present this evening, so thank you.
And Spencer, the, the public hearing for Budget Appropriation Ordinance will be?
So the next step is to adopt the appropriations ordinance, which is the official spending limit for the village, and that has to be done within the first quarter. So it's usually done in a first meeting in July.
Yeah, that's a good point. The budget itself is our guide that, you know, we work off of on a daily basis.
Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, I'd ask for roll call.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Present.
Motion passes. New business B, 301 to 319 West Ogden, 530 North Park, Medical Office Building redevelopment. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests to allow a medical office building redevelopment at the corner of 301, 319 West Ogden Avenue and 530 North Park Street. One, a zoning map amendment to rezone 530 North Park Street from R3 Residential District to B2 General Business District. Two, a variance to allow parking in the required front yard setback. Three, a plat of consolidation. Four, site and landscape plan. And five, waiver to allow non-conforming parking stall dimensions. And I got Director Sylvester to add to that.
Mr. Mayor, trustees, as was just explained, this is a proposal that requires five separate approvals for various zoning matters. It's an exciting proposal, but it's also a challenging proposal that entailed a bit of controversy. So I'd just like to very briefly summarize what some of the controversy was and how it was resolved. First, in terms of process, this item was considered at the Economic Development Committee earlier in the year. I can talk about that in a little bit later. And it was considered at two separate public hearings by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those meetings were well-publicized and well-attended. I think the Planning and Zoning Commission did a great job conducting those hearings. At the end of those hearings, the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote six to one to recommend approval of the required zoning items. The proposal itself is to construct a new 50,000-square-foot medical office building on a site that's currently occupied by a strip center and a standalone restaurant building. So the proposal is to remove the existing structures, build the new medical office building. That would be after the lot to the south at 530 North Park would be rezoned commercial and then combined with the larger parcel along Ogden. Some of the controversies or some of the challenges, maybe is a better word, that came up during the review and the consideration of this proposal. One was stormwater. A lot of the residents in the neighborhood had some very understandable concerns about stormwater. Long story short, any new development anywhere in Westmont or anywhere in DuPage County for that matter has to comply with very stringent stormwater management rules, and this development will meet those rules. Currently, the site has no stormwater management facilities on it at all, and it's almost entirely paved. So any rain that falls on the site runs off the site to people downstream. After this development, a large amount of water that falls on the site will be detained on the site and released slowly. It's very technical and complicated, but in general terms, that's what will happen with stormwater, and it will be a net improvement. Second concern that came out during the review of this proposal was traffic. The applicants conducted a traffic study. They determined that there would not, the study determined that there would not be any negative impacts. It is staff's opinion that traffic will be improved primarily because the current development has four driveways to and from Ogden, and this development will consolidate that into one driveway, and that will improve safety conditions, traffic safety conditions on Ogden. Third issue that was discussed at great length at the Planning and Zoning Commission was the appearance and the general aesthetics and design of the building. I'd like to give special, a call out to Planning and Zoning Commissioner Sharp, who's an architect. He worked with the developer, and the developer was cooperative in changing the appearance of the building and addressing some of Commissioner Sharp's concerns about the appearance and the beauty of the building. And that resulted in some changes that Commissioner Sharp felt very comfortable with, and the final design is included in the materials you received. And then last, and perhaps most significantly, the concern that came up during the review of this proposal were concerns about what would happen to the existing business tenants and, you know, how this proposal, if it proceeds, will affect the existing businesses. What I'll say there is the village's Economic Development Director, Larry Forsberg, did a phenomenal job. He did a lot of work. He met very often with the businesses and continues to meet with the businesses. He's working with a few in particular, trying to find them a place in Westmont where they can relocate into some existing vacant commercial space. Some of the businesses on Ogden are taking more of a wait-and-see attitude to see if this project is approved, but Larry's been meeting with all of them and trying to keep them in communication and let them know what assistance the village can provide. The developer, too, has also been cooperative and has been meeting with businesses as well. Developers here, I don't know if he'll have a chance to talk. He may be able to elaborate on that.
Yeah, you've got to come.
Yeah, if I may, before the developer speaks. I don't want to minimize also one other concern, and that was from the resident immediately south of the Park Street property that's proposed to be rezoned. Just so we're complete on the list of concerns, she was concerned about noise, screening, lights, garbage, and stormwater, which you mentioned. But the applicant is trying to minimize any impacts to that resident by installing a fence, a row of shrubbery on both sides of the fence, lights that are, meet the photometric standards of the village and will cut off at night by a certain hour, and relocated the garbage, which is located on the south side of the building, closest to this resident to the west side, I believe, and it's a fully enclosed dumpster facility, so trying to eliminate some of the noise. So there was an attempt to, by the developer, to satisfy some of those concerns that the resident raised. I don't know if he's satisfied all of them, but there was an attempt to work with that. On the lease situation, I just want to point out for the board, for the public, and in particular for the tenants, if this is approved, the approval has no impact on the tenant's lease situation. This board has no idea what the leases say, what their terms are. Village staff has no idea what the leases say, what their terms are. If this is to be approved, it doesn't serve as notice or that the tenants have to leave. I know there's an encouragement to make this project happen, if possible, between the landlord and the tenants. That's between the two of you. If it turns out that a tenant has legal rights that, you know, the village is unaware of and is unwilling to move, again, that's between the tenant and the landlord, and may be enough to impact this development actually getting built. But again, we don't know whether that will happen or not because we don't know the lease terms.
And I think now I'd like to do is ask the developer to give a summary. After the developer, I'll open it up to the public, and then I'll close that, and I'll open it up to the board. So if the developer, and anybody who comes up, please state your name and address for record.
Mr. Mayor, trustees.
Mr. Mayor, trustees, good evening. My name is Larry Debb, eleven eleven, Tewey in Displanes. What we're proposing is a three-story, fifty thousand square feet, very high-end professional medical office building. Little background, we've done over twenty of these in suburban Chicago, and have all been extremely successful. You know, we believe in building top quality because doctors will, will pay that. The rents, just to give you an idea, right, you know, currently the tenants are in there paying ten, twelve dollars. Will be about thirty-two to thirty-four dollars a square foot. So, this will be an extremely good building. Parking-wise, we need to provide enough parking that the market requires, and we're doing that. We are cutting down the, the number of entrances and exits from five down to one. I dot thinks that this is great. It is a state road. They're very on board with it. They think it's a good idea. We did have some discussion during zoning about where this, where it should be located, and our consultant with, along with the village's staff and consultant, looked at different locations of where that entrance should be, and it was determined that this was the proper location for it. And then, there was also talk about park. A lot of the residents, my neighbors to the south, were concerned about cars going down there, and we said if we had a left turn only out, we'd be happy with that. Staff had not determined, I don't believe, what their final decision would be, but we'll do whatever they want. We were lucky enough to have Mr. Sharp help us, who's an architect with Gensler, making some improvements to the building. All, most of the ones, if not all of them, that he requested, we've incorporated into the, into the building itself. Chairman of zoning also made some very good comments about landscaping, and we added every one of his comments to our plan. As was pointed out, we met with our next-door neighbor. Specifically, we took our fence that we were gonna build along her property line and ours. We moved it in a couple of feet, so we were able to put plantings along her side of the fence, as well as on our side of the fence. So, we're, and, and in terms of stormwater, there was a lot of discussion about it, and I'm not an expert by any sense. We're meeting all the codes. Just to give you an idea, we're, we're gonna be detaining on our site underground three hundred and ninety thousand gallons of water. So, will it solve all the flooding problems in Westmont? Probably that, but it will definitely improve the, to flooding to, to the south of us. Because right now, it comes off of Ogden Avenue onto our property. All the rain that falls on our property heads to our neighbor to the south, all the way down and floods the park down there. So, there will be a significant improvement. In terms of lighting, our lights on the south side of the building will go out. We'll turn those off at eleven o'clock. We'll dim the ones around the, the property. We did move the dumpster to, to help, although there's twelve dumpsters back there now, there'll be one. So, that in itself will be a significant improvement. We're also rebuilding part of Park Street, as well as across the street from us. We're rebuilding all that curb line, which was requested by staff, a requirement from staff. I think that pretty well sums up what we'd love to do in your village, and we're looking forward to being a, I've done other developments here on Pasquenelli Drive. I did a couple, a bunch of those office buildings there years ago, back in the eighties and nineties. But, it's fun to come back here and do another development. So, if you have any specific questions, please.
Is it okay to ask?
I, yes.
Okay. Could you explain how your stormwater retention is going to work? I understand semi-permeable pavers. I don't know what kind of.
Yeah, semi-permeable doesn't really store any water. That allows it to drain through.
Understood.
What we're gonna be doing is, we're gonna build what's called a storm trap. That's a brand name. There's other ones out there. So, that when it rains, it'll go into a tank, a three hundred and ninety-four thousand gallon tank under the parking lot, and it'll retain that. And then it'll slowly go into the storm sewer system with a restrictor. So, it could take up to forty-eight hours for that rain water to enter. The key is, it won't flood over our site, which it does now, onto our neighbor's site, through her site, all the way down to the park.
How's it get to the tank?
To all the, all the drain, all the sewer lines, all this, you know, that are in the parking.
So, you're using your parking lot as solid?
It'll be solid, correct. And it's rain, the rain that comes on from the building itself to the downspouts are also connected to that. We do have a lot of landscaping though, so there will be some absorption, but the truth is, there's a lot of asphalt, and most of that water will be stored underground then.
Okay. Thank you.
So, just one other quick note I wanted to bring up is, currently, the property pays about fifty-five thousand dollars in taxes that go to all the different governmental agencies. According to your staff and the assessor, we'll be paying over four hundred thousand dollars, which of course will not only help the village, the school districts, grade schools, and everything, a significant increase of what the villages and the taxing bodies will be enjoying from our development.
Trustee Barker.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I wanted to compliment Planning and Zoning for all the work that they did and the details. Commissioner Sharp made a very good point, I thought, is, you know, this is a concern that I would have, is, you know, when people come in here and they make a presentation, or they go to Planning and Zoning and they propose a building, we need to have something, and I'm looking at Bruce back there, but we need to have something in place to make sure they build us what they said they were gonna build us. And he had some concerns about that and other projects that he had witnessed in town. And we don't want that to be the norm, that something is shown and it's not, it doesn't reflect that. And the same thing through code enforcement or whatever other tools that we have, that we go back and make sure that, you know, you build a beautiful building. Our goal is to keep it that way. And, you know, our, our village staff is gonna be on it to make sure that it stays a jewel on Ogden Avenue.
Well, we're both on the same side there, because my tenants that are paying these high rents will require it. So, absolutely, I agree with that.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we'll open it up, but before I do, I think, Spencer, the other question that came up, and I think you evaluated, is the loss of place of eating tax and sales tax to the village. And I think it equated that there'd be more property taxes than currently is collected, because that was one of the issues. I, I received an email, and I think we looked at that and.
Yes. So, in looking at all of that, it looks like the project will be close to revenue-neutral, probably potentially a slight increase in revenues due to property taxes being slightly higher than the current estimated other taxes that are generated there. So, it's pretty close to even with a slight, likely a slight increase in terms of revenue.
And that includes place of eating tax and?
Places for eating, video gaming, sales tax, and current property taxes.
Okay. Those are just some of the questions that came up. So, at this point, I'm gonna open it up to public comments. I ask that you, you could, you can go.
I'll stand at the side.
You can go to the side. What I'd like to do is hear the comments first, close the comments, and then we could address that if we want. So.
If I may, one, one additional, it was brought up about our tenants, and I realize that the board has no impact one way or the other regarding my tenants, but we've met with all of them multiple times. Even tenants in there that don't have leases, we're giving them money upfront to help them in their relocation, which is absolutely unnecessary, but it's something that we felt was important, so I wanted the board to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would I ask if those who come up to the podium, state your name and address? And we're supposed to limit you to three minutes. I'll let you go, except for this guy. But I'll, where's your staff?
The cortisone took care of that.
All right. What we'd like to ask is that if there's repeating comments, that if we could not hear the same thing over and over. Sir, you could state your name and address.
My name is Joe Sacco, S-A-C-C-O. I reside at five ten North Park Street. And from June of this year, my wife and I and my family will have resided there for the last fifty-five years on the same street, same location. And I've looked at all of the information that was published and what they're trying to do. I mean, you've probably heard the expression, a pig and a poke. Well, there's something to be said about that. But first of all, congratulations to all here who were inducted today and the entire board, and to you, Jim Addington, especially, for taking the time to go downstate and see a person who was very valuable and contributing to the success of Westmont. Thank you, Jim. Now, to get back to this again, this is a residential area, period, always has been. And when I say a pig and a poke, if you look at the number of issues that we have to contend with, number one, we have a school on Traeby, just a block away. We have a park right adjacent to my property, where kids come down there all the time, and we don't need this traffic down Park Street, which will increase. They gave you some misinformation as far as I'm concerned. It's not going to decrease. It's gonna decrease maybe the egress at Ogden Avenue, but Park Street, and you know it as well as I do. All you gotta do is look at Burlington, see how many people go across the striped lines where they're trying to stop for the train. We don't need that with the children we have there. I've raised my family here, and I love this town because I wouldn't still be here if I didn't. I could have left a long time ago. And five thirty, there's a much better situation for that. And I know the village can do this, because that could condemn the property and put a huge water retention area there. Now, I do understand the situation with the floodgates. We don't need that additional green space sacrificed. They've sacrificed it too much with the number of the building homes around me. In the fifty-five years that I've been there, it's unbelievable how much ground space has been covered. And they want to cover this with a parking lot? No way. No way. And I don't, I don't want to see children that come to that park every day, and I'm retired and I see them there. They come every day to play in that park. And guess what's gonna be happening up and down that street? You're not gonna, they're not gonna tell me, and nobody else is gonna tell me that there's not gonna be traffic down there. It's gonna be dangerous to these people. And the school, right across the street, they have four young children. The oldest one is eight. And they go to the park quite often. They go to Traeby School. Guess what? Not Traeby, I mean, they go to the Miller School in Traeby. We don't need this. We're a residential area. And there's a better way of utilizing that property to prevent the flooding that we have. And another huge retention pond. Let me, let me give you an example. How about the two retention ponds they put over there on Willard? And Lyndon, do they condemn that property? How, how'd it come about? Where'd they get the money to do those two huge retention ponds? That's what we need there. We don't need this. We don't need the restrictions of the parking, or I should say, I shouldn't say restrictions. We don't need to compromise on the parking. We don't need to compromise on the green area that we have. It's terrible. This, this is a residential area. It's not a commercial area. Tell them to take their project way down south, someplace else, but don't put it here, where we've grown up our entire lives, and I know people, I'm on my third generation of people that live there. So, anyway, I've said my piece.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for listening to me. And I hope that you take that at heart and tell them what they can do with this property, and that's not following through. I don't know how the, they approved it.
Hi, I'm Juanita Ray Dorn. I live at five twenty-six North Park Street. I'm right next to the five thirty address. My, my concerns, and maybe this is something that needs to be looked at, whether you approve this or not, the last couple of years, the traffic on Park Street, and it's not people using the strip mall. They're just using it to cut through. And I was unaware of how bad it had gotten until this came up. So, I was look, kinda noticing what the traffic was and where the cars were coming from. So, I don't know if Cass is so bad. I, and I, I noticed that the village hadn't said anything about doing the left-only curve on this. I haven't seen it happen yet, so I'm concerned about just putting a sign up, and they're all gonna just go that way. And also because I have a daughter who's only one and a half, and all she wants to do is run to the park. And it's, it's frightening. That's frightening. As for the water, the underground water thing, Commissioner Lavoy expressed some concerns in mathematical, which I don't have because I went online to get the minutes, and they weren't there to read to you, but maybe you all could look at that, about how to mathematically figure out for this particular site. I know there's codes for DuPage County, but that, I, they don't, it's like everybody mixed it together. It's not for an area that we all flood. And I'm not even as bad as the rest of them. It just goes through me, down to them. But, there was talk about the kind of release system, which I didn't hear any follow-up on that, which one it was. There was talk about when the sewer system is full, that, that tank during, like, say this last two weeks, could fill up, because there's no place for that water to drain into, because it's already full. You could see, because it's sitting, you know, by the sewers. So, that, that, those are, that's a frightening concern for me to make it worse. Not, not for the, and I'm not talking about hundred-year floods. That's gonna happen. I'm talking about how our climate has changed in this area since I've lived here twenty-nine years. It's, it's pretty bad. Not as long as they have. But, I mean, we can't even get to the park right now because of the rain. The sidewalk's all flooded. So, I do believe the developer is trying to be a good neighbor, and he'll do whatever the village says to make this happen, and I appreciate that. I just hope that these issues are looked at and addressed with much concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello. My name is John Sacco, and I live at five oh nine North Park Street. Would it be possible to use the overhead?
Yep.
I have a couple of pictures that I would like to present. Let's see, I'm gonna turn this this way, I guess. So, I don't want to get all of this in. There we go. Okay. So, most of the, most of the aerial photographs that have been shown have been of where the redevelopment is going to go. This is essentially the same thing. What it shows, though, is, it shows where Sentinel Park is. Also shows where the bus stop is at the corner for the Westmont Junior High School kids and the Westmont High School kids. And what it doesn't show is right down the street, Miller School. And as my father, who was just up here, said, there are quite a few small kids that are, that are in our neighborhood that use the sidewalks, basically up and down, to either go to the park or go to school. I'm not the best public speaker. I'm sorry.
Yeah, take your time.
You're doing great.
But you can't pass it over to your dad.
So, you know, actually, I had, I'd actually, I'd written a note on here. I would like to offer my condolences to the Simmski family. They've been a staple in this neighborhood for probably longer than any of us can remember, certainly longer than I can remember. And I've, I've, I've dealt with the Simmski family, and, and they're, every one of them are always the highest quality of people. And, and the village of Westmont should not only be proud but lucky to have their family here for as long as they've been here. Now, I, I would like to say that, that I'm here to speak on behalf of not only my family, but my neighbors regarding the proposed rezoning and development of five thirty North Park Street. I'm gonna try and be as brief as possible, but I basically have three issues with the proposed redevelopment. The first issue is the process. The village of Westmont has local ordinances designed to ensure the safety, well-being, and fairness in the process of such matters. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the last Building and Zoning Commission meeting. However, I do know that this proposed redevelopment has gone in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission twice now, and I'm at a loss as to how the commission legally voted on rezoning five thirty North Park Street, when all of the required legal conditions for the commission to even discuss the issue, let alone vote on such proposals, have never been met. I'm specifically referring to code ordinances for the village of Westmont, Illinois, under Appendix A, Article thirteen, Section one three dot one four, which states, "For all property within the village subject to a public hearing on rezoning, the village through its economic development department shall cause a sign or signs to be posted on the subject property at least fifteen days prior to the public hearing." Now, I walk the sidewalk in front of five thirty North Park Street every single day, and there is not, nor has there ever been, any sign posted in front of it or near this property notifying the public of any meetings to rezoning it. That being said, I believe the last two Planning and Zoning meetings that dealt with, discussed, and voted allowing this proposal to go forward to this meeting of trustees were both held illegally and specifically in contradiction to the village of Westmont's own ordinances. That being said, just for background purposes, I have a couple of pictures that I took. This one was on four twenty-nine. And this is the sidewalk that's directly in front of the park. What you don't see right here is actually a water fountain, but that water fountain is kinda pointless because you can't actually get to it. Now, if you look in this picture, and again, as I said- Now, if you look in this picture, and again, as I said, I walk the sidewalk every day, and when it's nice, I see kids after school going up and down the street. The current issue that we have right here is that, and by the way, these pictures were taken during low tide. During low tide, there's at least six inches of water that's on the sidewalk. I'm not talking about in the grassy areas or in the park, but on the sidewalk. Meaning, if you don't, if you're not wearing rubber boots, it's impassable. Now, there's a parking lot, I'll show you here, there's a parking lot that's right next to the sidewalk, and there's a little sidewalk here that goes to the parking lot. Now, in the days that this big truck isn't parked in the parking lot of the park, you can simply walk down the parking lot, and you can cross the grass right here to get back to the sidewalk again. Most days, when there are cars in the parking lot, and that truck is there most days, again, unless you're wearing rubber boots, to get back to a dry piece of sidewalk, you have to walk out in the street. I've walked my dog up and down there, I have to walk around cars, I have to walk in the street when, 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 when I can't get across the parking lot, and that creates an issue. This picture was taken on 429. This picture was on 52. This picture was, I believe, on 58. So this was yesterday. So it looks a little bit better, but this is before the rain that we just had last night, in which case, there's twice as much water covering that sidewalk right now. Now, I, 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 I've seen, well, with, with this project, and I understand that they're trying not to disrupt traffic on Ogden Avenue, I believe one entrance will probably do that. However, and I'm gonna go back to this very first picture. If we just have one entrance on Ogden Avenue here, where we shut off all those other entrances, we're gonna have a much bigger building, I'm assuming we're gonna have quite a bit more traffic. Obviously, we're gonna have a lot more asphalt covering specifically what works out to be roughly about an acre of property, maybe a little bit more, 530 North Park, that right now is all green space. But, you know, I was thinking about, if I was going to this medical building, and I'm driving down West Van Ogden Avenue, and my GPS finally tells me, "You're here," and I pass up that entrance, what am I gonna do? Well, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go over here to Roslin, I'm gonna go down the block, I'm gonna go over here to Trobe, right by the bus stop, I'm gonna go back up North Park Street, past Sentinel Park, where we know you can't walk on the sidewalk, to make it all the way back around to the side entrance, it's gonna be on Park Street, to get into the building. So, although a single entrance may help to not disrupt traffic on Ogden Avenue, it's going to make it worse on Roslin, Trobe, and Park Street. Now, I, I, I think, I think essentially, everybody, I think everybody's kind of on the same page. Schools, bus stops, parks, kids, dogs, pets, seniors, obviously the sidewalk issue. And now, when you add increased traffic to that, it's inevitably going to create a much higher risk for something bad happening. So, the, the two iss, I'm sorry?
If you could start wrapping.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'll let you state your points, but...
So, anyway, so the two issues that I see regarding redevelopment of this property is traffic and water. Now, the, I, I, I've, I've seen the assurances regarding both the traffic and the water mitigation systems from the developers' proposals, and I believe them both to be incomplete and inadequate. I mean, we're, we're gonna drop a big tank in the ground that's gonna, that's gonna collect all the rainwater, that's great, but it doesn't address anything as far as groundwater or surface water that are coming from properties west of there or north of there, 'cause that's the direction that that water runs underground, and when it hits that big concrete tank in the ground, it can't go there anymore. Now it's gotta go around it. And the park, as you can see, is south of there. So it's going to go back into that park where it goes now, only worse, it's gonna cover the sidewalk, only worse. However, I would like to suggest a couple of compromises to both of these issues. First of all, the traffic, I'd like to propose that the north end of Park Street just be closed off to Ogden Avenue. If you close it off, we don't have to worry about that additional traffic, and we don't have to worry about people going around the block, 'cause they can't, they can't get through there. The second issue was with the water mitigation, which, again, I've, I, I, from, from the plans that I've seen for the water mitigation for that specific property, from what I've seen, they've been very incomplete. They don't specifically say, "We, okay, we know that rainwater's gonna go in there, but what about groundwater? What about surface water? What about all the water that's running down towards Park Street, towards Sentinel Park, from the areas that are around it?" It doesn't do anything to mitigate that, and if anything, it makes those, it makes that problem worse. I think that that center area that's in Sentinel Park right here, that big grassy area, is it stands right now because of, and, 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 you know, I grew up on this street, in this neighborhood, I've been there my whole life, so I know what it was like in the 70s and the 80s and the 90s, up until now. And since a lot of new houses got built on Roslin, that park now basically has standing water in the middle of the park throughout the spring until about sometime in July, making it basically unusable. What I would, again, what I would like to propose is that we just simply use that space to put in a large enough retention pond that connects to the village storm sewers, and I think that will mitigate most of the problem we have now, and hopefully all of the problem once we eliminate the green space that's at 530 North Park. Thank you for your time.
For someone who doesn't like public speaking, you did a good job. Set us up.
I, I, I had, well, I had a lot of notes.
Oh, you covered them, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing nobody else, then I will close public comment and turn to the board if they have...
Maybe, do they wanna make a response for it?
Yes. Is any, any comments to what was said?
No, I appreciated all the comments. You know, we have over a million square feet of medical office space. We've never had an accident. We're pretty confident that we know how much traffic's gonna be generated, and we find that about 90% of it would easily go to Ogden Avenue, and if there is a no right-turn lane, zero would go down Park Street. So we'll work with staff and your traffic consultant for any additional traffic concerns. If you wanna close off Park Street, we'd have absolutely no problems doing that either. Regarding the wa, the water problem, the gentleman was right, we're not gonna solve all the problems. There's water coming from all different directions. What I'm stating, though, is that we'll solve 392,000 gallons of it, water that's on our property, created by rain on our property, and some of the water coming from Ogden Avenue. So we're meeting all the codes at DuPage County. Westmont, communities in DuPage County don't have their individual ones, you go by the county, and we're abiding by all of their codes.
Do you, when you, what's the hours you envision on something, on your previous buildings?
Usually seven to seven.
And Saturdays and Sundays?
Typically not Sundays, Saturdays from about seven to noon.
Okay.
You know, at night, the lights will be, would be turned down on the west side, so our neighbor, right here, sorry, you know, will not have any lights on her, in, in her property.
Okay.
Mr. Benter, can I make one last point? If you don't, I'm sorry if you don't, just real quick. Actually, you know what? That end of Park Street, if they do like they did on Grant Street, north of Ogden, and they shut that off, that very well may eliminate the need for a parking variance.
He'd have to buy the street for him. But, yeah, I, any other trustee comments?
I have several, but I think we...
We need a...
You wanna motion first?
Motion to approve Nero.
Second, Addington.
Motion made and second to approve. Additional comments or questions, trustee Addington?
Let's get the legal one out of the way first. Either to Bruce or to the attorney, do we have any knowledge of this statement that the sign was never erected that announced the public hearing?
I don't have any personal knowledge, but I'm gonna guess the sign was posted on the Ogden Avenue property. These lots are all being consolidated. That's substantial compliance with notice to the public. Not only that, notice was mailed to property owners within 250 feet of the property as required by local ordinance and state statute. Presumably, the Sackles are within 250 feet. If they are, they would've gotten mailed notice. In addition, notice was published in the newspaper as required by law, and the agenda was online and posted at Village Hall. And I think Mr. Sacco said he was aware of the Planning and Zoning Commission, but couldn't make it. So, I'm, I'm confident that the legal notice requirements were complied with.
Were met with. That, that was the first one. All right.
Anything?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Usually I close, I'll give you one more.
Okay, one more question. Okay, so, 'cause, you know what, I, I read over pretty much all the village ordinances regarding zoning and rezoning and so on and so forth, and I don't think I saw anywhere where it said if you're combining a property, that you only have to put notice on one of those properties. The, they, we're talking about two separate things. We're talking about redevelopment of one property and rezoning of another property. And where the sign was put on, it was put in a bush near Ogden Avenue, but the property at 530 isn't on Ogden Avenue. It's on Park Street. And I believe that the ordinance does specify each individual parcel has to have that sign. I'm not gonna get into this.
And that's what...
Let's move on.
Fortunately, we've got a legal counsel that we...
Just got a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor, about, well, first off, you know, I live by the DuPage Medical Building, that's very similar in size to this, and I drive by it probably more than I want to admit to. And, you know, comparing to the parcel that's there, although we're gonna lose an awesome movie store, hopefully they could put that in the first floor somewhere, if it passes. The traffic, I, I have to believe with this traffic study, it's gonna be significantly less, I, I mean, the parking lot at DuPage Medical Group is a fraction of what I can see now at the property on Ogden. And the hours are different than a restaurant. You're talking closed on Sunday, you're talking no lights, like is there now. I, I mean, the, the list goes on, on traffic. If I lived, you know, close by, I think I'd be comfortable just knowing what the DuPage Medical Building looks like and operates like, the type of people that go there. And the last thing, which is, you know, I think it's important to mention is stormwater. I mean, it's equally important, everybody on this board, you know, Westmont is more restrictive in our ordinances, I think there was a comment made, but our stormwater ordinance is more restrictive than DuPage. So I personally have to believe the engineering that, not, not to quote the amount of gallons. There's nothing there now. This is just like Mariano's, just like Standard Market. These underground infrastructure improvements, they're not cheap. I mean, this is hundreds of thousands of dollars, if they're investing in that area, that's gonna be an improvement. I mean, that's an improvement for the area. Is it gonna solve the park? No, but if there's one board that's committed to stormwater, it's this board, and if that's an issue we gotta fix, you know, we'll look at it. I mean, how many, how much money have we spent on stormwater? We consistently improve things throughout the whole village. So I think stormwater and traffic, although valid concerns, I think the village and the Planning and Zoning Commission and the developer did a good job to alleviate stormwater, improve it for the area, not solve it, but improve it with something that we might not have been able to afford without. So, with those two things, that, those are the two important, to me, issues. I think they were addressed really well by the developer.
Thank you. Trustee Barker.
Yeah, I would echo trustee Nero's concerns about the stormwater. I mean, I, I understand the water situation, the problems, and we've talked about this years and years and years, six years now for me. But I have to say that the experts are gonna probably be better at this than we are in figuring it out. And I watched all the tape, and I saw Commissioner Lavoy's concerns, who is an expert, he has some expertise there, but it was, you know, he, he didn't say it isn't gonna work, he was just debating the complete volume of it. And then it did come down to the gallons, and they figured it out, and they put it in English for us to understand. And it's much improved over what is there now. And then, secondly, Mayor, I look at this one kinda like when we had the Aspired Living Project there. You know, the neighbors were opposed to that, but we knew, 'cause we sit up here and we have to, you know, make a choice, but those, that, the choice is that something is probably gonna go there, and what would you prefer that it be? And, you know, we don't get to pick, it has to come to us. And I'm saying, you know, this is a good-looking project, hopefully it'll be good for the community, and it'll drive more business, but I, I get the traffic concerns, I just think that this works. And I'd rather see this than I think some of the other choices that we may get.
Trustee Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We talk about all these longstanding families today, and the Sackles are, are right there with them, so when they speak, you know, we, I listen to what they have to say. You know, the, the right going out onto Park Street, I think is better served as a median that wouldn't allow a, a right versus just a sign. I mean, I think we see that at nature's best, the, the no-left sign's gone, they actually repainted it with an arrow now to take a left, and, and so they ignore our original ordinance. Whereas I think those medians, you know, that, you really have to make an effort to, to get out of those, you know, Y-shaped medians, and I don't know that that's not already in here, but I think those are better than just a sign.
I'll just comment that we had mentioned that, and your staff decided against that.
Yeah, we, we bumped heads on that a couple times. That's staff, I don't know where we...
We'd be happy to do whatever this board requires regarding that.
So, in my opinion, you know, I, I wish we would've done that at the Wendy's and a couple others where, where it becomes where, where people, as I, I see Mr. Sacco, the sign is, is gonna be ignored. I, I think most of us would, would agree on that. I also agree strongly with trustee Nero's comments. We've had great success with this underground. I wasn't familiar with Standard Market when it came in, but we did have Mariano's, and I've been there when it's just coming down in buckets, and, and we've had historic rains over the last month. There is no issues there, and they have improved the surrounding areas because there is less runoff. Secondly, to the traffic, I, I'm in strong agreement with, I feel there's gonna be less. You know, you have, you have, it's open there now, people can, and, and then, you know, you have, again, Sundays, you have multiple restaurants, you have, you know, I forget the number, 10 or 12 dumpsters now. We know that this is a deteriorating building. Something is gotta, is gonna happen. To Bruce's point, you know, if that becomes a 24-hour restaurant where there's drive-throughs and things like that, we don't have control over that. And, and this, to me, is a huge improvement of the value of the community. Yes, there's some dollars there that are a, a great improvement, but the overall value and appearance, I, I think is, is nice, and I, I, I think it's gonna be an improvement to that area. And that's, that's my opinion.
Trustee Addington.
Couple things. And I, I agree with Harold, I was gonna point that out, too, that some of the properties over by me that have benefited from what we did at Standard Market. I, I'll talk specifically about the lot, the, with the parking cars at Black Hawk and Ogden. That never was not underwater with these significant rains, and that's been drying out for a couple of years. And, and so I, I think that I came into tonight with some real serious questions in my mind on the stormwater issue. And I'm getting more comfortable as we talk about it and what they're doing. I mean, we're talking 390 thou, or 390,000 gallons, that's 40% of what we put in, in our water tanks, for heaven's sake, that's a lot of water. And, and I would point out, too, and I don't think we've ever done this on the west side of Cass, but on my side of Cass Avenue, for those properties along Ogden Avenue, you know, we kinda talked about this, and again, Standard Market was one of the emphases of it, was that little invisible line that said, even though commercial property kinda does this, this is the line. And if you're, if you're on that side of the Ogden Avenue line, you really could go commercial. And maybe down the road, this should be done, but I think 530 Park is definitely on that side of the line, as far as potentially going commercial. And, and the other thing is, and I, this is one of the other two things that I really struggled with going into this tonight, but I think the other thing, shopping centers are becoming something of a dodo bird, folks, they really are. We have a restaurant that probably has a good chance of closing at some point down the road, has nothing to do with yes or no on this project, but I know the situation, and I know that one of those eating places may very well close up at some point. And I just don't think shopping centers are the way to go today. I guess the one question... I guess the one question I would ask that I had written down, do you have any tenants yet?
No, we don't, no signed tenants.
Okay. But I just, what's the way to go? And I think the way to go is, this is what we're going to see more of, and we do have office buildings on Ogden Avenue. Again, you know, across from, across from Standard Market, there's a very successful office building. And I know people can argue that it's taking away from sales tax, but as you heard from Spencer, the tax generation in that center, we aren't going to get hurt by this. So I think you look at what you said in your one letter, which was, we would be eliminating property that is well over 50 years old, that has some, it's a little tired, and.
Very nice of you to say tired.
Well, we try to be nice when we're up here, and replace it with a new, modern structure. And again, I think this is what we're going to see more of. So I'm not overly concerned. I'm happy with what they're doing, especially with the fact that I didn't realize that there was no stormwater on that property at all now, so now we're going to put almost 400,000 gallons of stormwater on it? Kind of makes sense.
Any additional comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would actually like to echo all of my trustees' comments, and I also want to thank the residents for coming out voicing their concerns. You were at both Planning and Zoning Board meetings, which I did watch, and I do want to say thank you to Planning and Zoning as well, because they do all the hard work up front, and they hammer out a lot of the details, and I want to thank them as well, and thank you all for coming out this evening.
Yes.
Jim raises his hand.
I know. I think that my concern for the residents is to let them know that this will help with the water situation. I understand that you're looking at it going, it can't possible, but it can. What's happening right now is the property is high, and everything's running to the south with the level of your sea level, your flat building right now, and all of that is going to be captured. All the rainwater is going to be captured and put into the ground. It's going to prevent everything that was a runoff from the parking lot in front, the parking lot behind, and the tops of those buildings, it's running your way. It's going to be going underground. So as, I honestly think that this can work, having seen it already in so many other areas of the village. And I think that we've made a considerable effort to watch and to correct issues that we have with stormwater runoff. We're adamant about it. We've spent a lot of money. We've bought properties. We've done a lot for the areas, and I think that this will hopefully mitigate a lot of the issues that came up tonight. Traffic, we'll do the best we can in whatever it takes to assure you that we can alleviate a lot of the issues. Maybe you don't let them turn south, and it can be prevented using, there's a street in particular on South Cass that only allows northbound traffic. It doesn't allow southbound traffic from a residential area. So, and it has a curb that you can't hop, and you can't go around it, and I think that that might be what we need. But I do think that what's happening with the retail industry, we saw it at 63rd, we're looking at it in other areas. Unfortunately, when properties are not maintained, the value in the whole village goes down, the value of your neighborhood goes down, and this is certainly an opportunity of a lifetime, I think. I don't think you'll see a lot of other opportunities come our way, and like trustee Barker said, when something comes to you, you have to weigh all odds, and when you're weighing them specifically for all needs, that it beats the devil we don't know. So.
Thank you. Trustee Barker.
One last comment, and then I'll stop talking. But I'd like to see staff maybe look at that sidewalk in front of the park there. It looks like it, maybe there's something worked that needs to be done there on behalf of the village. It just shouldn't be, it shouldn't be underwater most of the time.
Can I say something?
Go ahead. Where do you live? I'd let you have.
I just, I don't think I'll be happy about this project until every one of those tenants have found a new place. I love the Salties. I love Las Palmas. I love all those places there, the nail shop. Once I know that they've all been placed somewhere, I'll be happy about this. Until then, I won't, and I'm a Simske, and I'm just being honest.
I do have to say, from the staff and Larry's standpoint, we're doing everything we can.
I know.
And some are waiting till tonight to make a decision.
I know Larry's working really hard on that, and thank you, Larry, for doing that. So, Mr. Mayor, moving forward, and John, if we want to, if the board has a consensus that we don't, we want to make some type of restriction to go southbound there, should we put that motion in now, or how would you want to proceed?
You're talking about the restriction, I know, yeah, no right turn, some sort of curb.
As Linda suggested, or like I say, some type of median, something more than a sign, you know?
I've been told not to use the term pork chop.
It defends pigs.
So that was recommended by Planning and Zoning, and I conveyed that to staff, and there was some pushback from a traffic engineering standpoint that those really aren't effective. But if you want to override that, and the developers indicated a willingness to install it, indicated that at Planning and Zoning, indicated it tonight, you can just direct me to include that in the site plan ordinance, and I will add that as a condition for the mayor's signature.
Isn't it more effective than a sign? Is there a traffic engineer here?
All right, so if you take this same project and pretend it was on the other side of Park Street, so you're talking about you want them to turn right, turn out, and go up to Ogden. Now picture that east of Cass Avenue, and you already have a situation that is curbed, whether it's a pork chop or not, it's a channeled driveway with curbs, two signs, and ignored. So you could put all the mechanism in you want, it's not going to change behavior unless you're going to sit out there. And then how, how often are you, you know, responding to the residents on that street about they're still turning, they're still turning? So, you know, one, it's not effective. Two, anybody whose destination is south on Park Street, even if they go out on Ogden Avenue, there's nothing stopping them from going south on Park Street. So this doesn't accomplish what you think you would like it to.
Well, nothing accomplishes anything 100%. I mean, I think we're all aware of that, but those islands help better. Like I say, I look at nature's best, where code enforcement has completely ignored it. The sign is now gone. They've repainted a left and a right in there. So what's going to prevent, you know, these owners or anyone from doing that down the road if there, if there's no median in there? And I agree with you. I go and buy bank one the opposite way every day, you know? So it, they, not everyone is going to abide by.
Write that down.
But I think that that's a better situation than a sign that, you know, can get hit by a snowplow or anything like that.
So we could direct. I'm just explaining why that, why that recommendation didn't make it to the ordinance was my input.
I'll also just comment, and this is mostly for the residents, I think, even if that turn prohibition is installed by curbing and signage, if, and it's ignored, that's not something that the police department can monitor and write a ticket on. They can monitor turn restrictions on public rights of way, but not a sign on private property like that, so.
Chief shaking his head. Trustee Addington.
As long as we're on these restrictions, I would like to ask Chief Riley how these Y's affect equipment. Considering this location, do you ever see you guys coming down Park Street, or would you be coming down Ogden Avenue if there was a?
No.
I'm thinking more of the ambulances because it's going to be a medical facility.
Yeah, I mean, and this will be, this will definitely increase their call volume, but, you know, they look at the turning radius. The Fire Prevention Bureau Director has the turning radius of all of our vehicles. You know, 99% we come down Ogden Avenue, clear traffic. You know, we don't like to go through the residential areas, especially the schools where kids run out and dart out, and, you know, these vehicles do not stop on a dime. So we mostly always take Ogden Avenue if we can, but the turning radius in there, we'll let, get our ladder truck in there, get an engine in the ambulance, no problem.
A three-story building, you need the ladder truck for that, won't you?
Correct.
Okay. Then the other, the other thing among the restrictions that I was going to ask is, with regard to this wonderful lady, again, the fencing and the shrubbery, as far as what size are you guys recommending so we know that she's taken care of?
Yeah, we had, we had to.
Okay. Because again, we did that with Standard Market on Blackhawk, and as far as I know, there's satisfaction, you know, as much as there can be.
And I'll point out that it's depicted on the updated landscape plans, I believe, what they're going to be installing as far as shrubbery and the fence height. And in the ordinance, it says they have to continuously maintain, repair, and replace all landscaping and fencing. So if shrubbery dies on either side of the fence, it's the owner's obligation, or their successor in interest if they sell it to maintain that.
Thank you.
All right, one last thought. In my previous life, Sentinel Park, which I'm very familiar with, we banned community-wide activities there because of the residents. We don't, we had T-ball there at one time. We had organized, there's not enough room on that residential street for that sort of event, so we have been considerate of the residents. I know that we tried to squeeze as much we could on Sentinel, but it's a neighborhood park. It's not a regional park. So through the years, I know we've always been sensitive to the residents in that area, so.
So much so, he's still saying "we."
We. I think the park put the sidewalk low, no.
For Larry and the developers' benefit, you do not have to find a place for the movie store. It can go bye-bye.
Wait a minute.
It can go.
I'd ask. I'd ask for roll call, please.
All right.
This will, this vote will include the turn restriction.
Okay.
Onto Park Street.
We need to make a motion to make that amendment?
No, I think it's clear from the minutes, and I said I will include that in the ordinance based upon this vote, unless I hear objection otherwise.
Okay. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barrett.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Motion passes. I, one question I have is, when do you plan on starting? Soon as you can get 10 years leases?
No, we'd start as soon as we finalize our agreements with some of the tenants. As I said, even though they don't have leases in many of them, we're working with them to find locations. A couple, we've taken most of them out to find locations already, and luckily, a lot of them are relocating in Westmont.
We hear rumors, but we haven't.
Yeah, no, no, it would be as soon as possible.
Good, thank you.
And this, we don't need to do separate motions in any of these, they all get done in one?
All right, moving on. New Business C, One West Quincy, reapprovals for Holiday Properties. Board to consider an ordinance, reapproved ordinances, reapproving the following approvals for Holiday Properties LLC related to the zoning and development of a mixed-use building located generally at the southwest corner of South Cass Avenue and West Quincy Street. The motion to approve ordinances 1 through 12 as a block, as written here.
So moved, Addington.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second. Again, these have been approved already. We're ready now. Additional comments?
Just the background behind this, there was a condition in the original ordinances passed in, on August 2, 2018, that the ordinances would become null and void if the developer did not close on the properties by April 1, 2019. The developer is planning to close on the properties on June 18 or thereabouts. And so in order to allow this project to continue, we're asking that you reapprove all of the ordinances. These are all separate ordinances that would normally require a separate vote, but your motion was to approve them as a block. And the new requirement to close, I extended in the ordinances out to October 1, 2019, so we're not coming back unnecessarily in case there's a hang-up with the closing, but the intention is, they're, I talked to them again today by telephone, they're ready to move forward. The only other clarification is, the plat of vacation for a portion of the public alley requires a three-quarters vote of the corporate authorities. So if there's any concern about this, I know it's unanimous approval the first time through, that item should get pulled out and voted separately if you're, have any hesitations about reapproving this.
Any comments from the audience? Any more trustees? Seeing that, I ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes. Motion passes. New Business D, Ernest and Young, TIF Consulting Agreement. Board to consider ordinance approving a master agreement and statement of work with Ernest and Young LLP regarding TIF Consulting and Economic Development Consulting Services. Director Parker.
As the board's aware, we've been using Ellers as our TIF consultant for quite a long period of time. They have decided the end of last calendar year that they were no longer going to be providing those services in the Chicago area, and so they have left, and we're looking for new TIF consultants. One of our TIF consultants, the individual who had worked for Ellers, who was working with us, is now at a firm of Ernest and Young. So we'd like to adopt this agreement so that we can utilize her services. We're also looking at other TIF consulting services, and so we may not have one specific that covers everything, but we'll be able to use them as needed for different projects.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second to approve as presented. And the question, seeing a roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes. Motion passes. New Business E, Parking Amendment. Commercial Vehicles. Board to consider ordinance to amend the Village Code Regarding Regulation of Commercial Vehicle Parking on Residential Properties. In park property? No, just residential properties. Director Sylvester.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, this item was considered at, I believe, two or possibly three meetings of the Community Development Committee, and it's just creating rules for how the village will regulate the parking of commercial vehicles in a residential area and recreational vehicles in residential, not recreational.
Just to clear up, originally, the proposal included some further restrictions or refinements as to RV, parking, et cetera, that, and also there was a discussion about metal storage boxes. Those latter two items were pulled out based on the committee discussion. So all that's before you is the commercial parking on residential properties, and there are some conflicting areas of the code that address this. So the idea was to better define what constitutes a commercial vehicle, and then make sure the areas of the code, like the nuisance code, and eventually we'll get to the zoning code that requires a public hearing, are all consistent.
So the D-plate is really just weight-based at that point?
Correct. It's, a B-plate is still okay, pickup trucks, all that kind of stuff is still okay, just your heavy gross vehicle weights on the D-plate. Yeah, it's actually greater than a D-plate. So the wording is, is defined as vehicles having license plates greater than D-plates, and it also goes on to, in that definition that was provided by Jason Vitell, he's the one that drafted this.
So this reads a little differently. I would take this as we are going to restrict D-plates.
I believe the language says greater than D-plates.
This, this one says, new language for commercial vehicles, D-plate parking in residential districts is supposed to clean up conflicting regulations.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're looking at the agenda write-up that staff did. That's a bit inconsistent with what was presented to, in this document from Mr. Vitell, which was greater than licenses, having a greater than D classification.
But that's not what we discussed. The D-plate was, is the hinge. The D-plate is exactly what's going on across from Mr. Fleck. That's exactly what's going on on Grand Street. The whole idea was the D-plate. Greater than a D-plate is like a F, is, that's, I mean, a D-plate is a huge vehicle. You're not restricting RV or anything with that. You're, to me, it has to be the D-plate, as it reads here, not over a D-plate. I mean, that's, that's a semi-only. I mean, what's, what's the next one over a D-plate? Is. I mean, a D-plate is a big truck. Is, I mean, a D-plate is a big truck.
I have no idea.
That's what I, I mean, if somebody correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that what we discussed at the last meeting? If Jason went rogue, that's on Jason.
I know what was passed out and what the basis for the discussion was that I was aware of, and it may have, maybe the discussion got convoluted and was turned into a D-plate conversation, but I don't know the weight difference.
There's not urgency to this, and maybe a suggestion is just to table this item if there's agreement, and then we'll clarify that.
Because even the way it reads, it reads D-plate, does everyone read it that way?
It does say D-plate.
In the agenda description...
What else am I gonna go by?
The ordinance that I passed out tonight...
I didn't read through the whole thing at four o'clock, I mean, it's, and when I started reading, it was scavenger-related, most of it at the beginning.
Yeah, just the highlighted areas that really aren't that much that's highlighted in that.
So, I am strongly opposed to D-plates being in residential areas.
Then let's table.
Good catch, Harold.
That was, that was the whole, I thought that was the whole conversation, was cleaning up these delivery businesses that are going on in these, in residential.
Do I have a motion to postpone?
So moved, Guzzo.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to postpone, any particular date or just we'll announce it when?
I think it's a pretty easy issue. Yeah.
Only been working on it a year and a half.
What's another meeting?
Well, really, it's been a long time.
But I know the one suggestion I had for Jason when he was coming up with this language was, you know, come up with, what does D-plate or higher mean? What kind of vehicles does that cover? And he goes on in the definition to talk about, you know, not only semi-tractors, dump trucks, front loaders, cranes, tow trucks, flatbed tow trucks, non-recreational trailers or similar vehicles that are over nine and a half feet in height are also prohibited. So, I think he tried to capture it, but again, if there's a, you know, one further discussion that makes sense on what D-plate means.
Again, I was under the impression from our last meeting that it was D-plates is what we decided on. So, for that, when you made that comment that it was D and above, or above D, that would be concerning to me, because I don't think that's our issue with these delivery services that we have.
Good catch, like I said.
I don't, I...
We'll put it on for...
Well, the motions to postpone.
Yes.
We won't give a date, hopefully in the next meetings we'll post it. Roll call, please. Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero. And I want to thank everyone for coming this evening, this meeting is adjourned.